I'd like to call the meeting to order September 3.
October 1.
October 1. Let the minutes note 5:40 we started.
Yes.
Okay. And we can stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Yes. Zakaria Hi.
Here.
Steve Minor.
Present.
Paul Wright.
Present.
Tamara would be coming, but she's not yet.
So she's absent.
Yeah, I think it's. Yes, it stopped.
So two absent.
Two absent right now. Okay. I'd like to ask for adoption meeting minutes from our last meeting on September 3.
Mr. Chairman, meeting minutes were distributed. For you and I would propose that we approve those minutes from the September 3 meeting.
I approve. Oh, I second, sorry. Now I approve.
Approve.
Approve. Can we make a note?
Yes.
So before we proceed with the order of business, I would just like to advise all the applicants that we only have three members present. That is a quorum. However, if your project is voted upon, it will require a unanimous vote of the three members present. So normally what we do is we give you an opportunity at this time to ask that we hold your application in abeyance for a month until hopefully we have five members present next. But it's up to you entirely. Well, I guess we have four now, so. So.
Or five.
So, so, yeah. So cancel what I said, I guess.
Thanks for waiting.
Explain a two-two vote. Explain a two-two.
A two-two vote motion fails. It still require, every motion requires at least three votes to pass.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or? All good?
Does anybody want a table?
Anybody want a table or are you okay? Okay. All right, so let's get on with the, our old business, our first. Yep, P L Z B A 2025 0046 1819 Fifth Avenue. Can you state your name?
Lindsay Hooper on behalf of 1819 Fifth Avenue.
There's no mic there.
There's no mic.
Does this? Lindsay Hooper on behalf of 1819 Fifth Avenue Associates LLC. I believe at the last meeting, this matter was tabled. We did apply for an area variance. The driveway on the property would result in the existing structure being about 100 feet setback from the main road, whereas the city code allows for 10 feet, so we'd be looking for about a 91-foot variance.
Any public comment at all?
I just had one question. So basically, these two, the main building, the Carrot House, will now be two separate entities, two separate everything, correct?
Yes, one is a residential building and the other is an office building, so the intention is just.
Okay, and has all the infrastructure, like, like the, you know, the municipalities all been separated? Or I don't know, was it ever connected? But were they at one time connected and then now they're separated? Or has that all been done or?
When you say municipality.
Well, like, you know, water, gas, electric.
I believe that they're, they have separate meters, but I can find out if, or would like more information on that. It's my understanding that they're separate, but.
I mean, if they were, is that like a problem? Okay. So then, yeah, no, I don't have any more questions.
Is there anybody online that has a question?
So this still has to go to the planning, back to the planning board for approval of the subdivision. Today, you're just being asked to allow the area variance because the garage is set so far back from the street.
I would propose to the Troy Zoning Board of Appeals, an area variance. The variance would not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties if granted because you're simply subdividing a parcel that's already owned and they're both pre-existing structures.
I'll second that.
Do you want, we have to do seeker?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we will have to do, because it's unlisted, I guess we'll have to seeker, yes.
So seeker first.
Seeker first, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll do it, that's fine. In regard to P L Z B A 2020 2025 0046, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available for a negative declaration.
I'll second that. Just.
All in favor?
I.
I. We're through.
So I'll go back to the motion.
Yes.
I would move that the board approve the variance based upon the following finding of facts. It will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, would not have an adverse effect or impact on any physical environmental conditions.
I'll second that.
Approve.
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 Thank you very much, have a great evening.
The second. There's a dog out there. Second, we have is P L Z B A 2025 0048 2119 Fifth Avenue.
Yes. I don't know if you want me to respond to some of the questions that were raised by a neighbor. Oh, this is Suzanne Collins here and Jordan White. I can just answer those issues if that's helpful to the board. Okay. Well, some of the issues were dealing with the introduction of a transient population that could disrupt the stable character of the neighborhood. I really feel this is not an issue. In my document I submitted at the last meeting, I showed you a map with 12 dormitories and eight fraternities and sororities in the neighborhood, in the immediate neighborhood. One fraternity is right across the street. In that count, you have hundreds of students, not to mention the dorms that are just down the street at the corner of Tibbetts and Burdette across from the high school. And not included in that count are the numerous private rentals, including duplexes, multifamily houses on Burdette Avenue that rent to students. Several landlords rent by the room to students and you can find these listings on Zillow and Places for Students. The Burdette Avenue neighborhood is a vibrant, active area with constant pedestrian traffic. A lot of that is student traffic, not only from the college, but from the high school and middle school. The location of student housing, the RPI Fieldhouse, the athletic complex, the track soccer and football fields, as well as additional fraternities and sororities on People's Avenue, Cook Drive and Sunset Terrace add to the character of this university neighborhood. Troy is a college town and has been one for over 200 years. Burdette Avenue has been surrounded by campus life for decades. It is part of the character and a good percentage of the population. I do not agree that the neighborhood would be disrupted. And over 40 years ago, when I first moved to Troy and my husband and I started looking at homes, we immediately identified that this area of Troy was college and residential. Anyone who buys property in that area has to be aware of it. You're surrounded by it. So I, you know, I disagree wholeheartedly with that premise. Another problem that was mentioned by a neighbor was the increase in noise and activity that are inconsistent with surrounding residential and professional uses. Well, as I just stated, I don't believe this change in zoning will result in increased noise and activity. The proximity of a landlord to the proposed dormitory would provide oversight. The aim is to provide a quiet residence for serious students, professionals who are investing in their education. Unlike campus student housing and fraternity sorority housing, a comprehensive lease must be signed and in the case of students, often a responsible party must co-sign. This is far more regulated than any student contract with a fraternity or student housing. I don't believe that the comings and goings of students on a daily basis will be any more disruptive than the daily traffic and activity on Burdette, which is a major thoroughfare. The next item that was brought up was creating additional parking demand and traffic on an already crowded street and raising safety concerns. Well, for approximately 50 years, 2119 Burdette has operated as a dental office. To alleviate parking issues for the staff and patients, Dr. John Keegan purchased the property next door to provide adequate off-street parking. Residents of the proposed dormitory will have access to the off-street parking area located behind 2117 and 2119 Burdette, where there are 15 spaces for cars. The plan changes to 2119 Burdette will not create or contribute to the demands for parking on Burdette Avenue. And yes, parking can often be a problem on Burdette Avenue, but this is often caused by church services, events at the RPI Fieldhouse or athletic fields, after-school activities at the high school or middle school, or even faculty-student parking for the high school and middle school. So I don't agree with that premise that parking will be a problem. And the last item that was raised by the neighbor was the risk of setting a precedent for other non-conforming issues or uses and undermining the zoning plan. Well, I don't view this request as detrimental to the city's zoning plan. The neighborhood is defined by its coexistence with the university. It is also very close in proximity to a hospital, a church, a dialysis center, high school, middle school, and elementary school. And further down the road, you have medical professional office buildings. With the change in zoning in 2023, the property cannot be used for any medical or dental office. Mr. White has proposed a viable and attractive alternative use for 2119 Burdette. The property has been on the market for almost two years without any interest from parties for the permitted purposes indicated by Mr. or Miss, I don't know, L. Cooley. I hope the zoning board will agree that the variance will result in a positive change. Thank you.
Any questions for you?
I don't have any questions. I would like to make a comment if I may. So, um, to that, so I just, I'm hard-pressed to, I buy into what you're saying. However, the very last line of the person that you were speaking about, I do agree that a precedent is being set. And I also believe that, you know, you're not going to probably live there for 30 years. You're probably going to sell the property. It's not owned by the school, it's not owned by a fraternity. So I think that sort of eliminates that whole collegiate. It could become not collegiate is what my concern is. It could become a lot of things, which is what my concern is. 10 years from now, 15 years from now, you, you get married, you have a family, move to Gildeland, I don't know. But then it becomes this thing that's really like a tenement house, which for me, as I look long-term, that's my concern. Just so you know what my concern is.
Last month, we looked up the difference between dormitory and student housing, but you're still with the dormitory that you want to have it as and not student housing?
I'm asking for the variance to enable a sale of this property to Mr. White, who has come up with the plan. I can't proceed 30 years in the future. And I hate to see an empty property as attractive as this property is in the current economic situation where small businesses are not.
Would it be a viable thing for, not for your buyer, but for, for you to, I know it's on one deed, right? We have two separated, we have two separate parcels with section block and lot, but we have one deed. Have you considered, since you already have two parcels, creating two deeds, so you have two completely different buildings with a shared driveway? That, you know, then that could become whatever, somebody could make it into a single-family house. Maybe they come back and make it into a two-family house because there are two families on that street. Has that even been considered?
Well, um, initially, my thoughts were that if you separated them with the parking area in the back, you have one home that has basically no backyard. And so that would not be very attractive. I'm 75 years old. I really can't get into remodeling the office.
No, I understand that.
You know, so, you know, there are, there are things I would do, you know, if I was a lot younger. But, um, you know, I feel that if I separate them, I'm going to be stuck with a property that will never sell.
Just a comment and/or a question. I've driven by that property multiple times in the last month. This past week, I actually walked up and down in front of the properties, took a good look inside the front window of what was the dental office. I understand your issue. I empathize with that. But I think the solution to the problem may be to go back with your attorney and your realtor, create two separate deeds, two parcels on two deeds, put both on the market as single-family homes, and you're in compliance with the zoning code change. I understand that's time, it's work, it's some effort, but I think that could be a viable solution to your problem. All of the student housing on Burdette was grandfathered well before the change in the zoning code.
Just to clarify something that was said earlier. I believe the, the variance saw it as for a dormitory.
For a dormitory.
Which is limited to student housing by definition under our code.
It would be.
Right? And that is the application, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, just so.
Okay. So that got changed or specified since last month?
If you want to pull up the definition again.
This is Jordan White. I believe last meeting, the concern with it being, becoming low-income housing is how it got pushed to dormitory, if I remember correctly.
I mean, you can limit the variance to use as a dormitory. So as it's defined right there, pull it back up, yeah.
But that would apply to both buildings, so he couldn't, he couldn't technically live in the second building, right? Or no?
This is for, this is only for, this is only for one building. For the dental office, it says a dormitory is defined as a building utilized as a residence exclusively for students of a college, university, or school.
Just the dental office.
My question is, what other use do you see the dental office becoming? Let's say I'm not involved. What other use does it become?
It's a cool funky building, I mean, it'd be a great single-family house.
Do you?
You'd have to rip the inside out.
Right.
I mean, that's not you, but one. One, one would have to rip the inside out, I mean.
From a financial standpoint, I can't see anybody, you know, spending renovation budget to convert a commercial structure into a single-family home.
What's the square footage of that building? Proximately, give or take.
I believe it's like two, I don't have the, the numbers off, off top of. Got the realtor.
It's over 2,000?
Yeah, this is well, well above 2,000 square feet.
I mean, it'd be, because it's very mid-century looking, it'd be, it'd be a fabulous single-family house.
It would be a great single-family home, it's just, I don't know who would like financially, if that would make sense for anybody, because you have to purchase it and then you have to spend the money to renovate it. And then.
I did, I did that to mine.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, I have a hard time with the dormitory thing. I mean, it's a cool idea, but.
Is there anybody out there that has? If they'd like to say or?
I have a question. There are, online you can find management companies in Troy that rent to students and they've taken over buildings and rent by the room. And basically, they are doing what Jordan proposes. You know, they buy these homes with six bedrooms and so what is the difference?
They may be in violation of the zoning.
Okay, and it's, it's public knowledge, though. It's, I mean, they get away with it? I'm sorry, I just.
Sorry. The other difference, which is major in this scenario, is one structure will be owner-occupied very close proximity to the proposed dormitory. You know, we're talking.
So when you do have this make-believe family that I have, you move it to Gildeland, you're going to have to, you're going to have to sell the whole thing as one.
Not necessarily.
He could propose a subdivision later on. Actually, he doesn't even need to propose a subdivision, it's already two separate. It's two parcels right now. So theoretically, he could issue a deed. The owner, whoever is the owner could issue a deed for one parcel and not the other.
Somebody want to speak?
Come on up. Come on up.
Lifelong resident and a taxpayer in Troy. My name is Allison Collins. And I am within walking distance of, of the property. I have a question about this process. When we were here a month ago, there was a request to have a variance and we discussed the rooming house. We discussed, you know, the concerns about low income. That was, that was addressed. So we went in the direction of, or the applicant went in the direction of the dormitory. So now there are concerns about what could happen down the line with the dormitory. So are we looking at, is this board, is the function of the board to accept or reject based on the impact to the neighborhood? Because if the, I understand that there are many grandfathered properties, but, you know, there, there is student housing up and down. There is student housing a mile from there. You know, students buy properties on Mom Street and rent by the room. It's happened, it happens all over Troy and it's not legal, but it happens. It would cost a fortune to redo this building. And there are eight rooms, there's a basement kitchen. I mean, it is, the structure is set up where it would be very, very minimal to have students living there and living quietly as they've done for, for several decades now. So I guess I'm just, I'm questioning what is, what is the, can you explain the oversight of it, of this decision, of how this wouldn't fit? Is that what, is that what is, is being considered? Because I just don't know a lot about the zoning process. So that's my question as a, as a resident as well. What, what do we have, what boxes have to be checked so that it can be allowed or not allowed?
So, so the zone, a dormitory is not a permitted use in this zone. So you need a variance for that.
Yes.
That's it, right there. You, the preferred use for facilities in this zone is residential. Which one?
Yeah.
Are two?
Yeah. It's our one.
Our one? Our one.
A lot of the properties.
So let me finish, okay? I understand that there are a lot of grandfathered properties around here, all right? But the zoning board here has to consider this, this is a use variance. You have four tests to meet, including the hardship and the detriment to the neighborhood and all that stuff. So the, the board will exercise its best judgment here about whether or not to grant your variance. The, the fact that there are other properties in the neighborhood being similarly used is not, is not decisive or conclusive of your application. Okay? So because the zoning is for residential, as the house, which is on the adjoining lot, is residential already. So that, that is the process. You're, you're trying to overcome a restriction in the zoning here with your application and it's up to their good judgment to decide whether or not they want to grant that.
And are there specific criteria for, for, you know, for the review? Like, is there, are there certain?
There are, there are four, there are four tests that have to be met and. There has to be an economic hardship. There has to be.
Reasonable rate of return.
That's the economic hardship, right? They can't get a reasonable rate of return unless.
Relating to the property as unique when compared to similar properties, that it either does or does not apply to a substantial portion of the neighborhood. The requested variance, if, or if not granted, would alter the essential character of the neighborhood or the alleged hardship is self-created, self-imposed.
So, I mean, I don't know how the board is going to decide this issue. If you wanted us to table your application so that you could consult legal counsel and perhaps have legal counsel appear for you, I mean, I think the board might entertain that, that. But it's, it's really up, it's between you and the board.
Keep in mind for a use variance, all four tests have to be met. Not one, not two, but all four.
It gives you the, there's a conditions, yeah, there's conditions, you can put a condition to say that the, one of the properties has to be owner-occupied? Did you do that? I don't even know, I don't know.
Don't rewrite the law.
I don't think you can do that.
So. I have a question. You know, by just by design. The layout of the building at this point is not conducive to a residential property. When I was asked by the planning department to go through a list of possible uses with the fee for private.
Permitting uses.
Yes. One, I remember one of them was senior housing. And my only thought to that was, yes, they, there's no way I can compete with yet. You know, but just by the type of building it is at this point. It is very difficult to find interested parties. And I, I don't know. I guess perhaps.
It, it's been for sale for two years at below market value.
Yes.
Right?
So I, I don't know at this point if the board is not in favor, then I guess we'll have to come back with another option, but I don't.
I was here for the last meeting and then you tabled us to this night. My understanding when we left the last time was that.
Can you provide your name?
Oh, sorry, Linda Luciano. I'm the Realtor for Mrs. Collins. And at the time, my understanding was that you had heard our proposal about turning it into a dormitory. How many rooms is it going to be? Would be, would be, he be akin to putting in a sprinkler system to accommodate the new construction and criteria now for New York State, which he agreed. And so those four points that you mentioned about her hardship, obviously, two years now, the property's been there. She pays taxes, she does maintenance and all of that. The tenants are no longer in the, in the two seventeen building. The, the dentist has just left, so there'll be no more income coming in there to pay these taxes and maintenance. So this is the hardship that my client is facing. So and also the point that she made about not being able to find someone. I've been working diligently to try to find someone to take that space. And as we discussed, because it is funky, as you say, it's been, there's been no one. So when Jordan came along with his proposal, I thought it was pretty good. And he could make it into something that would benefit the neighborhood, benefit these students, benefit the city of Troy and provide housing for himself and for them and the owner occupied right your side. And he was going to make it a really nice situation for these young people. So I guess I'm not clear as to the four points. I understand the hardship for her. The second point was. I'm sorry, could you repeat with the second?
It's unique. It's, the property is unique when compared to similar properties. And does or does not apply to substantial portion of the neighborhood.
Does not, I'm sorry, does not what?
Apply to a substantial portion of the neighborhood.
With what we're looking to do, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh. Well, I think she had some valid points and information regarding that, that it, that's, not that I'm saying you're wrong, but I'm saying that primarily the area is, has many student occupied buildings. And the third, the third was what? I'm sorry.
Will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
I don't, I don't see how she's know.
And then it's not self-created.
Rick, if, if, if it were to become a dormitory for students only.
That would be the permitted use that you would be allowed.
How does that get policed down the road? You know, again.
So.
Gilderland, he's got his, he's got a swimming pool and how, how do, how do we police?
Well, that doesn't necessarily change the, you're only granting the variance as to the former dental office. If he moves to Gilderland, as you posited, as something like that, then what you, what you lose there, I mean, his house is still a single family house. You lose the owner supervision, I guess, which the applicant has touted. But as far as policing it goes, it is really, unless I mean, much of our co-compliance department, which is also a zoning compliance, is complaint driven. So if someone makes a credible allegation of a misuse of a property or an unpermitted use of a property, then we investigate. But we can't, we don't go throughout the city checking each residence to make sure. I mean, the applicant has represented that there are people who are renting single, single rooms to students in single family residences. That may or may not be true, but you know, unless someone makes a credible allegation or something like that, we don't, we don't go seek it out. I mean, most people, we depend on most people complying with the law.
Right. Right, 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 right.
You, you have not tried to market it as a single family residence, a dental office, is that correct?
No, no. It's divided up as an office with operatories and rooms.
Yeah, I mean, it's been a dental office until just the end of this month, right?
So we're just looking to, to change the dental two nineteen into dormitory space. We're not looking to change anything at two seventeen, as you said, it's part of the same deed. But it could, if something changes, if he moves out, it's still.
Commercial use to another.
Right.
The question on the building. Has it been marketed with a for sale sign on it for residential use?
Well, we never put a sign out front because the gentle practice.
But they're going.
They're going as of today. So we could certainly put a sale, for sale sign.
It's online.
It's online and every, on, on, on every, any, any site that you can imagine and, and being a Realtor, and Tamara knows this too, that, you know, a sign is a sign typically for the Realtor to find the property or number two, to pique some interest for a rental or something to that, in that regard. But anyone who is serious about a property has an agent that they're working with, looking for a specific type of property in a certain area at a certain price point. And that's where we get our leads and that's where we get our clients. So for sale sign will be a lot of knocking on the door. Oh, how much is it? Can we come in and see it? Traffic on the street. Now, is, is it, is it for rent? Is it for sale? So, I mean, certainly, you know. Yes, it's vulnerable. It's empty. It's vacant. The security, worry about security. Thank you for that point. Yes, as well. So. My hands are tied on the.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify what you were saying. So you asked if it has been advertised as a, a single family. Currently, the property is not a single family, it's a zone single family, but it's currently an office space.
Right.
So I don't know how they can advertise as a single family because it's not single family right now.
Well, I think in the listing, Linda, don't you have it listed like, sort of like, you know?
Yes.
Bring your, bring your ideas.
Yeah, bring multi-use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, she hasn't listed as such that.
Yeah.
Come and take a look and figure out what to do with it, which, yeah, exactly, exactly.
And so someone has come to us.
Someone has.
And said, this is what I'm proposing. And we like the idea because we like everything he has to say. And the other portion of it is that he has been really working hard at putting plans together and pricing and.
You know, Linda, I looked quickly and you could probably hit to this better than anybody. When I, when I went onto like CRS and kind of poked around and stuff.
Yeah.
Can you just give me the quick ratio? Because I know there's single families. I know there's three families on that street, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so that.
There's, there's, there's two, three in single family houses, correct?
Yeah.
Is, do you have? Is it like a third, two third? Do you have any? Because I, I can't remember what I'm. Like, like, is there a percentage of how many single family? Because I understand the the, the person that, that spoke out, although that person actually owns a two-family, I, I believe. And it wasn't a single family person that spoke out. And no other person has spoken. There was two? Was, was one a single family? One was a multi, already a multifamily owner.
It was a two-family, I think one's single.
One was single, okay.
Sure.
I was just trying to wonder what the ratio is, is on that street of multifamily to single family.
I can tell you that the homes north of the hospital.
Yep.
Are pretty much two families.
Yep.
The homes south of the office going towards Tibbetts are mostly single. But the others are all multifamily, two or three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm stymied right now. Honestly, I'm.
Is there anybody else out there that has anything to add or?
Somebody coming up.
My name is Paul Moreno and I own a house in downtown Troy. Also an RPI graduate. I'm familiar with the neighborhood and I just have to say, I thought you made a compelling argument for your, for your use variance. I don't, the criteria that needs to be met hardship, character, you know, changing the character of the neighborhood. Not self-imposed. I, I just thought you made a, a compelling argument. Character of the neighborhood, I don't think is going to be changed in a detrimental way. And I think an occupied building is much better than one that could go vacant for a number of years because of some future pre, preconceived use, which may, may not happen. So you have to make a decision based upon what's here on the table. So that's my input.
No.
Would you like us to bring it to a vote?
This is our second time here. We understand you're missing some board members tonight, so.
So the first thing we're going to vote on is.
Tell them, is it two, two?
So if it's two, two, it doesn't pass.
Okay.
So you, you need three people.
So should we wait for all board members to be?
You, that, that will be your choice. So if you want, if you want to do that, well, the, the board, I think, will entertain a motion to table this. And, and let me explain to the consequences. If you, if the motion fails, you don't get the variance. It's not like you can bring it back again, okay? It, it's. You could come with a different use, but you, you won't be able to come back with the same proposal a second time. So, and you, you will need three votes to pass.
Is Will, is he active?
Will, Will is not a member of the board.
He was here last.
He, he, yes, Will is on staff.
Okay.
The missing member is E V Donbys.
Oh, okay, got it. That's what was throwing me off.
So, so if it was, just as hypothetical, if it was, if it passed as, as being strictly for dormitory use, wouldn't that be something moving forward that anyone who purchased the property would have to use that property for that, for that use?
Yes.
Yes, so.
The, the variance would go with the property.
Okay, so that said, that said, considering that everything Suzanne said about the fact that it is, it is in a college community. That would make it viable for someone else, say he left and wanted to sell it to some other young.
The issue right now is whether you want this tabled or whether, or whether to wait for the fifth vote to be present or what.
Yeah, let's do the vote. I mean, you know, this is. I would say. Well, if we come, if, if we table it until next meeting, there, there may be someone not here at that meeting, right? So it's, you know.
It's a possibility, but usually we have. It's unlikely. We have pretty good attendance most of the time.
Yes, it's, it's Yom Kippur.
Today is Yom Kippur. Yeah, that's why she's not here. It's a holiday for the member.
I, I shouldn't be here either. Table it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It was.
It was the right motion.
For that.
It would have gone down.
Yep.
We're gonna two, two it.
Yeah.
Rick's reading the room.
You don't know, right?
Okay. Our next order of business, new business, is PLZBA two zero two five zero zero five zero four four two, Second Street.
Hello. My name's Adam Patella. I'm the project representative, as well as the architect for the project. Four, four, two, Second Street. What we're proposing is a single car garage and what we've described as a workshop space, which is just a workshop space for the owner of the property, nothing commercial or extensive or anything like that. We'd like to use an existing curb cut. And the owner would prefer to improve that curb cut. Right now, it's kind of just been asphalted over by the city and he'd like to formalize that a little bit more. I think with concrete was his idea because driving over and over and over again would make it even worse. He's got a number of other site improvements, including landscaping and a new fence that he's going to pursue once this project is done. The garage is sixteen feet by forty feet and we're requesting, I believe it's a nine-foot variance, I'm not sure. But we'd be using an existing curb cut and the access would be off of Van Buren Street. The photos that we've provided were to demonstrate scope as well, to demonstrate that right across the street, there are two structures with five five garage doors opening right onto the street already. This one would be behind a, a gate that would slide. The.
So, yeah, can you?
Lean to, isn't that back there, something, what's in the back there?
Point your finger to what's what there, because it's kind of, kind of having a photo too.
Yeah, there's like, I don't know, some janky woodshed kind of thing. It's not, it's, I would hardly call it a formal structure at all.
Is that where it's gonna go?
Can you, can you describe what's in the photos that you've?
Yeah, is this the first time you're seeing these?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So if we go maybe up to the site plan diagram. You can see on the right side, which is the east side of the parcel, where we've got proposed one car garage and workshop. That the hatch rectangle would be the structure itself. The other larger kind of hatched area would represent what would be paved or concrete. We would enter from the top there where it says new gate. That would be the kind of entryway for the vehicle. There'd be a fence around the rest of the property, including up against the the alleyway there. There's an existing utility pole at the back there at the bottom right where the cursor is now. The owner would also propose putting a bollard in at the corner just to keep cars from hitting any, any new fence. And like, like I said, the curb cut's already existing. The photo that we provided, if you want to go to the next page, please. Photo number one there shows the existing curb cut and kind of the area that would be improved with new concrete. Photo two shows the. Photo two shows the view from the alley. That fence would be replaced. You know, we go through the fence approval process. And then photo three, the one below there, shows directly across the street from, this is essentially if you were driving out of this garage onto the street, you'd be staring at
That's what you see, yeah, okay.
Three existing garages, or excuse me, two existing garage structures that go right onto the street. The structure itself is like a simple, it's it's kind of like a a monopitch roof, one car garage kind of thing. There's potentially like some doors and things like that, just to make it like kind of an open air workshop space if you wanted it to, but it's it's a it's forty feet long to be able to accommodate his pickup truck and then kind of a workshop area outside of it.
So it's kind of like the one to the ru, to the left, only with one door instead of two doors, just a single story?
Yeah, more or less. It's a monopitch roof, so instead of a gable, it's it's a single, single pitch.
Oh, okay. He likes to work on his cars and trucks.
I think it's more for like, like woodworking and stuff like that, not not a garage for vehicles now.
So let me ask you this. I believe you've answered it twice, but in the application agenda that I got, one car garage with a workshop, this is non-commercial use.
Correct.
This is personal use.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to know.
And where's the bollard that you spoke of?
It would be the upper right hand of this.
Can you show on the picture, Angie? Show the picture, I want to see. Total one. Whereabouts would it be?
So it'd actually be, it would be. And I I think that's something, obviously, we would, you know, fire department, whoever else has a vested interest in that, we.
Right, you'd have to make sure it didn't interfere with any, with the city right away or the fire trucks and.
Yeah, I think I I I feel like the owner said that there was like a vehicle had hit this fence before, something like that, so that was his concern, but you know, the if a bollard makes or breaks this project, we're certainly happy to admit it if that's what it comes down to. We also, I spoke to Carlo about kind of who who's responsible for that sidewalk, and he seemed to, it was kind of ambiguous about actually who would be able to make improvements, or if the owner could make improvements to the sidewalk area itself. So that'd be another.
Owners under city code are responsible for the maintenance of adjacent sidewalks under two fifty four four, I think it is, or two fifty one, four, whatever, whatever the code number is, but it they have to conform with our building code.
Great, so the owner's willing to to replace the asphalt that the city put down, for whatever reason, and then he would replace that with concrete.
So you'll just have to building permit that.
Yeah.
And the fence.
Yeah, the fence would go through the the permitting process for the fence as well.
Right, they'll have to get a foot permit for that too.
But it would be a replacement in the same location. I think different materials, maybe kind of more updated materials, but we would be applying for that.
Any, anybody have any questions out there in the public or online?
Do you need a sec for on this? Yeah, we, yeah.
Go ahead, Zach.
So what we're voting on now is just the seeker.
It's not type two, is it?
It's just type two I.
Type two?
Yeah.
But we're not replacing an existing building. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in regard to PLZBA two zero two five zero zero five zero, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board finds this proposal to be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available upon which to to state that no determination is necessary or required.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Look, I think you have to check, this is type two.
This is.
It was given unlisted.
It was given unlisted.
Type two.
So, okay, so amend it to be a type two seeker action. Is that all I needed to say, or do you need me to?
That's, that's all.
I still second that.
I I still approve.
Approve.
Approve. Approve.
No further review, there's no further seeker reviews required.
You want a use variance?
The use, right?
Or an area variance?
No, it's an area, area variance.
In regards to PLZBA two oh two five zero zero five oh, four, four, two, Second Street, we'll go to an area variance. I would move the board to prove the variance based on the following findings of fact. The variance would not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties if granted. And the variance, if granted, would not have an adverse effect or impact on any physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, because it's non-commercial use.
I'll second that.
Approve.
Prove.
Prove. Approve.
How's that?
You're good.
Thank you very much.
Good to go.
Congrats.
Moving right on.
The next order of business, PLZBA two zero two five zero zero five one, thirty five State Streets. Paul?
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Moreno. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees for Christ Church United Methodist, located at thirty five State Street in downtown Troy, between fourth and fifth. And we were asking for a area variance to install an additional fence in our parish house garden area that would prevent people from gaining access to some secluded areas of our garden area. The two areas of concern that have that have been areas of concern for a while are we have an emergency basement exit with a stairwell that's sheltered, that we often have some people hanging out in that stairwell, either sleeping overnight for long periods, periods of time, or even during normal business hours, people will go down there and you know, do all sorts of stuff, which I don't have to get into details about.
No.
In addition to, i- it's really interesting to see some of the stuff that goes on there. There's another area just located further back from the stairwell that's kind of in a secluded area where there's another emergency exit on the first floor of the building that connects the parish house to the church house, a parish house to the church building that also, you know, undesirable activity occurs. We have an existing wrought iron fence around the garden area, but, you know, locking the gates during the day just kind of inhibits public egress to the building. We have a number of organizations that use our facilities during the day. In some ways, we're almost like a community center. You know, we're we're open more than just Sunday mornings. So the idea of putting up an additional fencing to kind of section off that area of the yard was a solution that we were looking at. Now, we could go four feet high, but we're concerned that, you know, that might be, you know, too low to prevent people from jumping over the fence, so we thought we would go six feet high to make it a little bit more difficult. Will people jump it? Time will tell, but at least we're trying to do our best. Any questions?
I have no questions at all.
I have none, question.
I have no questions.
I have a couple of questions. If you don't mind. One is, what type of fence are you proposing, material wise?
Yeah, well, we're, we have a HRC application in route right now, and we're going to go talk to the HRC folks. I think on October fourteenth, we're on their agenda. What we're proposing to install is a ornamental wrought iron looking-ish type of fence to match the character of the fence that's already there existing. And it'll also have a gate with a crash bar on it for emergency egress.
So that that was my second question is will, you you said this will enclose emergency exits. Is that what the plan is? So how will people using the emergency exits get through the fence? I think you might have just answered it.
Exactly, yeah, there'll there'll be a a gate in that fenced area with a crash bar on it, so people exiting the building during an emergency from the basement area or from the first floor going out into that garden space, they'll be able to hit that crash bar and an exit.
Okay. Those are the only questions.
Do we have?
Anyone else on the public, any comments?
Go for it, Zach.
So this is unlisted?
This is, this is, no, this is type two.
Everything he's got written is wrong.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, Zachary.
Yeah, both, yeah, these. This is where I was working on, but that one's. I want this take two, two tests, I'm listening to.
Oh.
Yeah, it just says taped to, yeah, yeah. In regards to PLZBA two zero two five zero zero five one, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be a type two seeker acts, action with sufficient information available upon which to state that no determination is necessary or required.
Second.
Approve.
I approve.
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 I need to move the variance. It's an area variance.
Area variance, okay. Regarding PLZBA two oh two five zero zero five one, thirty five State Street, Troy, New York, we're going to go to an area variance. I would move that the board approve the variance based upon the following findings of fact. The variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor will it be a detriment to nearby properties if granted, because it's only going to solve problems and everything is going to look very much the same. And it would not have an adverse effect or impact on any type of environmental issues in the district.
Second.
Approve.
Approve.
Approve. Approve.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next order of business moving along here is PLZBA two zero two five zero zero five two, five eighty River Street.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Pat McDonough, authorized agent on behalf of Crispin Venini, the owner of five seventy four River Street, Crispin's Automotive Repair. He also owns five eighty River Street. He purchased it in October two thousand eighteen in the, with the anticipated use of demolishing the structure on the site and using it as off-street parking for his adjacent building or his adjacent business. So we're asking for a special use permit for that purpose.
Actually, what you're seeking here is a use variance.
A use variance, sorry about that, thank you.
The planning board would be the, has purview of special use permits.
Got it. Any, any questions?
No, it's pretty straightforward, right? Anything we need to know? Want to tear down a building and put a parking lot, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, early this year, we had it, an asbestos abatement completed on it when we identified asbestos on it, so we had. Asbestos abatement, so the shingles, there is a portion of the building that had asbestos shingles. We got that identified through testing, and then we had them removed.
That's been done.
That's been done. It was done this summer. That's correct, sir.
Yes. Ask the applicant whether they wants to speak to any of the tests, the four tests that need to be met for the use variance.
Do you want me to go over that with you?
So from a hardship perspective, I wrote in the, in the letter that I hopefully you guys have seen. You know, it's a, it's a, it's not a typical hardship. The hardship currently is an opportunity lost hardship, because right now, Crispin uses on-street parking and has to shuffle the on-street parking in order to accommodate the the business flow. This provides additional off-street parking, it also provides additional safety for those vehicles. There's been several in the twenty years you've been there vehicles that have been overnight gotten hit and and significantly destroyed. So that alleviates that problem to some extent, but it allows him to have a higher throughput of business. I estimate that he's probably had an economic loss of about fifty thousand dollars over the last four or five years since he bought the building and hasn't hadn't had the opportunity, you know, regardless of the twenty years you've been in business. So this improves his business operations in addition to providing some safety to the vehicles that are currently always parked on the street, if they're not, if they're being, not being worked on.
And this is a derelict house anyways, right?
That's correct. So, yeah.
There's three other tests.
So the other one is altering the essential character of the neighborhood. I have a hard time believing, granted, I have a hard time believing destroying or demolishing a big building has an adverse impact. However, the addition of the parking lot, which is the intended use, I also doesn't, don't think that has it, because there's other there's, it's, it's a commercial area. It has a few residential properties adjacent to it, but for the most part, it's mixed use. There's commercial and residential, so the addition of the parking lot, I I don't see how that adversely impacts the, the altering the essential character of the neighborhood. Environmental impact, we talked about that. We we took care of the environmental impact with removing the asbestos. We're not doing anything creating another adverse impact by just having it be a parking lot, we don't believe. And the other part is unique compared to other properties. There's already vacant lots on that portion of the street. This just adds to that. It doesn't change or it it's not, it it creates nothing more unique than that's already there.
I have a question. What did the planning department say? Did you talk with them at all?
That, so the the planning department, we have not, well, we've got a building, we got the demolition permit, and they haven't said anything negative regarding the next phase of the project gap. We, so but we haven't, I don't think we've talked to them in great detail about the next.
So you do have the demolition permit?
We got it today.
You have the asbestos abatement.
That was part of the demolition permit. That was a requirement to provide them as part of the demolition permit, which we we satisfied.
Is there a difference between a parking structure and a parking lot?
Yes.
What would that be, and would either one apply in this case?
This is, he's proposing a parking lot, which is just a surface, ground, surface parking. Parking structure is like the Fifth Avenue garage or the State Street garage.
Oh, all right.
All right, okay, those are buildings that are designed, multi-level parking.
We have no intention to put multiple levels. However, if business, if this really does help, we would propose taking it from like a grade two stone that we intend to put down, a compact stone, to something more durable like an asphalt. So if we're, but obviously with the proper permitting. But so that, to me, I think we get a little bit more toward the structure if we do something more formal like asphalt with.
I think that might be more a planning board.
Yeah.
Site plan review. No, no, as as to, as to the quality of the materials that you put down.
Right.
Do you want to speak to whether or not the hardship is self-created?
So the hardship is self-created?
Is.
Is the hardship?
You want to argue that is not self-created?
It's not, it's not self-created. You know, he's owned the business there for twenty years. Yeah, since oh six. You know, the hardship is, it's not created, it's more of a, an improvement opportunity for his business. So, and right now, you know, he could be making more money, but because of the fact that he has to jockey vehicles all around, it's more of an opportunity lost hardship than an actual economic hardship, and it's not self-imposed, it's just the way the reality of his business works.
I have one more question. Would the applicant be willing to have the parcels merged?
So that, that's a great question. There is a small sliver of land between five seventy four and five eighty that's owned by First Columbia. We have pre-pandemic, I've personally talked to First Columbia twice, asking them, begging them to please tell us that sliver of land between five seventy four and five eighty. They will not entertain me at all.
So they're not adjacent parcels?
They're not adjacent parcels.
How how wide is this sliver of land?
This sliver lands approximately fifteen feet wide. And we cannot even get First Columbia to talk to us about buying it. I have, I'm exasperated with that element of it, so. We tried pre-pandemic, and once the pandemic hit, we moved on to other things.
You haven't addressed it since COVID.
I have no intentions of talking to them.
Okay, I got you.
I'm sour, very sour with First Columbia.
If we, if this goes through, it it may, it may be a conversation you could have. If, if this goes through, it may, it may be a conversation you could have.
They could have.
They could have.
Yes, right, 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 right. I, I, I have no intentions of talking to First Columbia based on prior.
2000, he said 2018.
We bought. The auto repair shop is 2006. October of 2018.
He's owned the garage for 20.
So the, the woman that was living there was moving out, she gave us her first rate of refusal. We took the opportunity because we had already started to talk to First Columbia and First Columbia wouldn't.
How long have you been in business at River Street 570?
Any, any questions out?
Anybody online?
Brand too?
Yes, please, please.
So seek, we're gonna do, it's unlisted?
Correct.
In regards to the PLZBA 20250052, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this approval to be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available for a negative declaration.
Second.
Approve.
I would approve.
Approve. Approve.
Want a use variance or an area variance?
This is a use variance.
So regarding PLZBA 20250052 with an address of 580 River Street, Troy, New York, we're going to go to a use variance and I would move that the board approve the variance based upon the following findings of fact. That the hardship relating to the property, well, it really doesn't apply. The request of variance of granted would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And I don't see where the alleged hardship is self-created at all.
Second.
There are two other tests.
All four, I'm sorry. That the property is unable to provide a reasonable rate of return unless the variance is approved.
That's, that's, that's one of them.
And that the hardship relating to the property is not unique.
No, that.
That it is unique when compared to similar properties and would be in the essential character of the neighborhood.
Second.
Approve.
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 Thank you very much. Have a great evening, everybody.
All right, our last.
Less man standing.
That's right. PLZBA 2025. Nelson Rivera.
Yeah, my name is Nelson Rivera. I have our fence.
Address.
106 Sixth Avenue.
106 Sixth Avenue.
Start again, sorry.
I doing, I did my fence with the permit, but I know specified the material and I used metal sheets roofing. And called enforcement, they stopped the, the construction. I just looking to see if I can keep the fence with the material I use. I think it looked good, no, but I just get compliment. Everybody see the fence? I, I don't know, I, I don't know if you got the pictures of the fence?
I think we've seen it, yeah.
I don't think it changed the neighborhood. The way the fence is, they, I made the fence. I, I living already there for 10 years. And I tried to, my house, little by little, get better. And then there's a lot of crime around. Like people jumping in the backyard. Then I own a daycare home, daycare. And we got like a playground in the backyard and every stealing stuff from the backyard. The fence is gonna be paying the same color because next year I'm gonna finish the siding and he gonna match the fence.
Are you gonna, Mr. Rivera, are you gonna do the back?
Yeah, the back is gonna be a.
In that alleyway?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a gate, 12-foot gate, two, two, two gates.
So the, the problem is, it's, it's not a fence. You, you, you took roofing material.
Well, I was thinking is like this, like it's a stockade fence.
Yeah.
Vinyl.
Yeah.
And, and similar style, like it looked similar style, the way I made the fence.
But that's not a fence, it's just metal.
Yeah, but if I paint it cream, it's gonna, it's not gonna be metal.
So to me, it looks like a commercial, I don't think it goes with a residential neighborhood.
It doesn't know the finish, yeah.
It's.
I have two questions.
Picture of the color, you, you have the. Like I sent a picture of the, the, how it gonna look in the future.
Another picture, you say.
The back of it looks beautiful.
That's between the outside.
And that's his backyard.
Yeah, that was my plan.
That was or is?
No, no, he means the old part.
The old part.
The other old.
Where the dog.
Did he need a variance for the height?
Yeah. I got approved for the height.
How tall is the back?
It's six. In the, like some side because the level, the floor.
Sure.
Is some size six and then go down like five, but the, the taller.
That's because of the ground.
The ground.
I have two questions for you. You got a work permit from code to do this, correct? And usually on the fences, because I put one in at my house this year and I went down to code, talked to them, got the permit, paid the treasure. Aren't most stockade fences, or at least in my mind, a stockade fence is either wood or vinyl?
Yeah, well, it's a similar, similar style.
Wood, vinyl or other material?
Yeah, similar style.
Or similar, or similar type.
Yeah.
What is, exactly, does it say?
Stock, stockade, wood, vinyl or similar type?
Similar.
But that is, that is not. Alright, that is, that is the, that is the permit. It, in the application, for the permit, that is not what is written into, in the city code.
What's written in the city code?
Barb, okay, it says the zoning code does not specify which materials are permitted, but does identify prohibited materials on page 92 of the zoning code.
What are the prohibited materials?
Barbed wire, electric fence, chicken wire, pallets, tires and plywood shall not be used as fencing material or as any part of a fence visible from the public right away. Construction fencing shall only be utilized in association with a construction project with an open building permit.
This is not barred by the code.
It's not barred, is it?
No.
No.
Second question, in your commentary, you said something about a nursery school or a daycare center?
Daycare.
Is that registered?
Yeah.
As a licensed daycare center?
Yeah, it's a home daycare with Rensselaer County.
You went what, sir?
Rensselaer County.
So you've got a permit for that? Okay.
All fencing, what's the first part of say? All fencing, fence will shall be installed, so the finish side is on the outside?
All fences shall be installed to the finished side.
So he does have the, he does have the bracing on the inside of the fence? And number two has the prohibited materials. Barbed wire, electric fence.
Can I ask a dumb question?
No, there's no dumb questions here.
Is the height within six foot, right? Does he need a variance for that? It's on the side, right, yeah.
So the height's okay?
On the side of the house, yeah.
Mr. Rivera, you mentioned something about painting it or refinishing it?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna paint it. I was, I was, when I built it, I was trying to get the, the color already in the, in the, in the sheets. But they don't was available. But it gonna be paint.
What color are you painting it?
Like cream? Bone white? I got a picture.
Yeah, yeah, show us the picture. I hit it again.
So it's gonna be like matching your house, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got the idea, thank you. Can I ask a dumb question now? So.
Why is he here?
That's, that's my question, so he hasn't, it's not against the code.
Correct.
And the application was for a similar type, which he seems to admit, Matt. Does he really need a variance? And I, I'm asking that is, I don't know, should I ask that?
Okay, so the reason why I think here, building department, they stopped him from continuing in the fencing because they said that the material that he was putting up was not a fencing material. And the example they gave was that if you, if you go to home people's rooms to look for a fencing material, you wouldn't find a roof this type in the fencing material. And they don't think that it's even safe, a safe material to use outside of them.
Well, they said it was unsafe?
Yeah, yeah.
In what way?
Yeah.
Because I think the edges are a little bit sharp on you. The edges of the.
On the top?
Yeah, and on the side.
You can, you can put, you can, we have fences all over Troy that have points and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, they're meant to deter people from climbing.
Yeah, they believe because then a roof material can, metal can not be fencing material. And that was why they.
So they did a stop work order for him?
Correct.
So what happened?
Yeah, because he indicated I was doing, according to them, he indicated I was doing stuff. Not others, that was not the impression I had. Did you say a stockade or others?
I, they go, stagger, wood and vinyl, I mean, the size, a similar type of fence.
I'm curious. What motivated you to use the sheet metal as opposed to what we would ordinarily think of the customary wooden stockade fence or vinyl stockade fence or have a fence company come in and just put one in? I'm curious.
I saw already people putting fence wood by my history and they already look bad. Like I don't wanna fix my fence every five years. That's one, one of the reason.
Oh, you were afraid of using wood because it would deteriorate?
Yeah, I see someone already like two years and the fence look bad already. I don't know if the type of the, the wood they use is cheap.
No, we're not gonna.
So. I understand that it's not prohibited by the code. That's my legal opinion. There's no variance to be granted and the stop work order needs to be lifted. The code may bear amendment, but until it's amended, I think that Mr. Rivera has not violated. I mean, that's. No, I don't believe there's any action needed on your part other than to, you know, staff will convey that. I mean, it's just not, it's not listed there as being a prohibited material.
So you understand that?
Yeah. I don't see it as prohibited material.
Neither do I. No, I'm saying it's not, it's not prohibited. It's, it's unusual material. It is a solid fence, I mean, it's a barrier. I don't know why, I'm not even sure if it should or should not be prohibited. I mean, it's, it's different than what we're, what everyone is used to and it's not sold commercially as fencing. But it's, it seems to be installed properly and it seems to be. I, I, I know, I'm, I'm at a loss, I don't know.
It's not on the list of subjects you can use.
Right, just because something's unusual doesn't mean it's wrong.
And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm saying it's, 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 it's not run-of-the-mill. I think that the building department.
Up the hill from me in Brunswick, it's made out of the same material.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they put something up on top of it. It looks really good actually.
So it wouldn't bend, maybe?
Yeah, so it wouldn't bend or.
Yeah, I gotta, I tried to put like a crown.
Yes.
Yes. Like a wood crown.
And it looks.
Alright.
Now my, my, I'm throw my two cents in since we're doing this. If the building department has to be more specific, my opinion, on what kind of fence, and when somebody goes, I, when I, I had to get two permits for my fence at my house and I took in there a photo of, or out of Bruce Fence or whatever, I took in, here's what I'm gonna use. I think that might be a step.
Might be a step.
And I, might be a step, that's all I'm saying.
My two cents, if there's a safety concern, you should think about addressing that.
Yep.
If you frame it.
Yeah, I'm gonna frame it.
Yep.
Especially if you got kids.
Stain that framing or paint that framing to match it, I think you'd alleviate a lot of safety concerns.
Are you, do you have material that you can crown it with?
Yeah, we, like, they stopped, we even, they, they walk, they drive when I, we start the fence. Like they saw the first three sheets. Then they wait till I finish, only the gates to finish the fence, then they put the paper.
So.
Like they don't tell me like right away when I start like the first three sheets.
Do you have, I guess, is it your intention to put some kind of crown on top?
Yeah.
To stay, it would stabilize it.
Yeah, I was already in my plan.
Yeah, otherwise it'll, it'll flap in the winds, it'll actually come apart.
It's solid, you need to go and, because it's like metal pole.
I see, you have medical controls, wood bracing and things like that, but.
Yeah, I go, I was already in my plan.
So Mr. Morrissey, how do we handle this? We don't table it, we adjourn it, we dismiss it, what do we do?
I think you dismiss it.
Then I would make a motion.
Are you making a motion?
Because, for the reason, for the reason that no action is required.
He's gonna have to wait till they get them to go to keep, continue.
So they're gonna have to lift the stop work order, we, we don't.
How, how do we get that, I mean.
You're gonna do that?
We just make a motion to dismiss it.
Yes. Okay, I didn't make a motion, sorry.
I tried to.
Okay, can I make a motion to dismiss it?
Yes.
Yes, I, PLZBA 2025053, I move to dismiss this.
I second that motion.
Essentially, we're saying we don't have jurisdiction over this, this is not.
Approve.
You're free to go.
Thank you. You're free to go. That's when, yeah, that's.
Before everybody leaves, would I be able to ask you guys a couple of questions?
Someone online?
Sure.
Okay, um, I actually received a letter. I've been in attendance on Zoom for every single meeting you guys have had since May. And I currently live next door to Martinez Fence and Construction Company that is operating out of our residential neighborhood. I've been told.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am. I'm familiar with your complaint, our code inspectors have. Our code inspectors have checked out the premises. They're not finding that he's operating a business out of the garage. He's entitled to use it the way he's using it. That is not a zoning question at this point.
So he, he had a lease agreement with me to use my property and he was operating the business from there without ever having a use variance or a certificate of occupancy.
So he's not currently doing that as far as we know.
He is. I've sent them videos of them still operating every single day.
Man, that is not a matter on our agenda tonight. And as far as I know, the reports of all our code officers who have been there, several different ones at different times, is not operating a business out of that garage.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Approve.
I
Okay, nothing to do with any business before the board?
No. I did, I, I voted to, I'll make another. I vote to adjourn the meeting. I.